Good evening and welcome to the May 8, 2025 Tingsboro zoning board of appeals meeting where, under the provisions of Chapter 40A, Section 11 of the Massachusetts general laws, the Tingsboro zoning board of appeals will hear requests for variances and/or special Hearing one, 66 Willowdale Ave., map 32, parcel 59, lot zero, long H Tran and, I'm sorry, I'm-
Do the best you can.
Uh, knock by Oduong, applicants for a variance under Section 5.5, lot area frontage, rear, inside yard setbacks, and a special permit under Section 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, renovation of a pre-existing non-conforming residential dwelling, and any other permit relief as may be required under the Tingsboro zoning bylaws to raise an existing dwelling and construction of a new 24.2 foot by 58.9 foot single family dwelling advertised in Lowell Sun, April 24th and May 1st, 2025. Can I have a motion to waive the reading of the butters list?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Um, is there any challenges to the legal notice or a butter notification?
So this is for any of the butters, were you not notified?
We're notified.
As long as you're notified, we're just checking to make sure everybody knew. Okay, cool. So there's no challenge to, you were notified, as in a butter. That's all we're asking at this point, nothing more than that. So yes, all good? You were notified? Yeah.
Okay. All right.
But, um, wait, did you say 66 or 166?
This is 66 Willowdale Ave.
Got it. All right.
Okay.
That's what I have to-
Sure. Very good.
All right, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Attorney Peter Nikosi on behalf of the applicant, members of the board, happy to see you again, it's been a little bit of a break.
Mm-hmm.
I have Mr. Tran with me, he's actually seated back there in the, in the back.
Good.
He's the property owner. With me, I have James Enright, who is the principal of the general contractor that's actually gonna construct the dwelling. Unfortunately, the engineer couldn't be here tonight, but I think we can adequately speak to him. This project is not dissimilar to many others that I have come in front of this board over the last 31 years around the lakes in this town, where some of the smaller dwellings, you know, pick up new ownership and people wanna do, you know, something a little better than what's there now. So, we've done lots of these, I know the, the board members sitting in front of me have seen lots of these, and it's really not dissimilar to that. So, what you have right now is a single-family dwelling there that they wanna tear down, they're planning to keep the freestanding garage, which is on the property, and they wanna construct a new dwelling in accordance with the plans that we have provided to you. You have a pretty full package in front of you, you've got the traditional certified plot plan with the zoning table, that gives you the mathematical breakdown of the issues that we're dealing with and the variance. I emailed out today, an additional plot plan, which has superimposed on it the conservation lines, because we, you know, our permitting path is not singularly here, we have to go in front of the conservation commission for their approval as well. So, just to give you a better understanding as to where the buffers are and the water is and, and some of the environmental challenges that we have in the lot, so we provided that. I sent you an additional picture today too, which is kind of a street front view of the existing property looking down at the lake. You have very detailed construction plans about the dwelling that's intended to be constructed. So, as per usual, we're here seeking twofold relief. The first is a special permit, because, you know, anytime you alter, amend, extend, enlarge, or do anything with a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling, it requires a special permit from this board as a, as a, as a freestanding grant. Now, just to remind you, and I know it's probably burned into your head from all the special permits you've heard over the years, that the analysis here is whether or not granting the special permit would result in detriment to the neighborhood. So, that's really the, the scope of the analysis there. Conversely, we also have to seek a variance, because we're, we're changing the footprint of things a bit, so we're dealing with all the dimensional non-conformities of the lot. Now, obviously, square footage, there's nothing we can do, we can't invent square footage. Frontage, we can't invent frontage, the, those dimensions of the lot are what has been ordained by, you know, the conveyance instruments on record. So realistically, it's, it's looking at the setbacks, and, so we are looking for various setback variances, because we do wanna alter the footprint a bit. We are pulling the property back off the lake a little bit closer, you know, moving closer towards the street to make it more conforming in that regard, and I guess more environmentally sound. So that's one benefit of the project. Obviously, it's gonna be a nicer, newer dwelling, it'll be compatible with, you know, the redos that we've done around this lake in the past, it'll aesthetically be better looking, higher tax revenues, you know, increased property values, things of that nature. So, those are all the positives. So, I don't, as I sit here, don't perceive any detriment to the neighborhood by virtue of the grant of the special permit. Now, obviously, the analysis for variance is different, the analysis for variance is hardship that has to relate specifically to the lot itself, and as I have presented to you many times over in the past, the hardship relates to the proximity to the water body and the limited developable envelope that we have by virtue of the waterfront and the buffer zones that surround that. So that is a unique circumstance owing to this particular lot, like they have owed all of these other lots that we've done, that justifies the hardship to, to grant the variance. In terms of specifically, there is, what I've done on the zoning table and what I've done on the plot plan, which you have in front of you, is there's a comparative analysis in the table as to, obviously, what's required under the bylaw, what's existing presently with the existing conditions, and what is proposed. So, just to do some rough math, the delta in terms of a compliant square footage lot, we're deficient by 12,595 square feet, because the lot is only 7,405 feet, and the typical requirement in the R2 zone is 20,000. But, the reality is that this lot is actually bigger than a lot of the ones that've come in here that are probably closer to the 5,000 square feet. As you know, on the original plan of development that was done way back in the day around the lake, most of them were the squared off lots with 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet of land. And, you know, depending upon whether or not people check aborted these things, and there was no common ownership in the back chain of title, they were all, they're grandfathered. Here, there is some common ownership, you know, which doesn't allow us to develop as a matter of right, so we have to come in before the board to get your approval to do that. But this is very similar to what we've seen in the past. So, we have a deficiency of 12,595 square feet in lot size. Frontage, 75 feet is required, we have 51, so there's a deficiency of 24 feet in frontage. But again, the reality is that those two numbers are immovable numbers, those are grandfathered aspects of this particular lot, we're not changing them, we can't change them, I'm just pointing out the deficiencies. We comply with lot width and today's present zoning, we comply with the front yard setback with today's present zoning. The rear setback and the side setback are, are non-compliant by 17 feet currently, we're actually diminishing the non-conformance and increasing the rear and side yard setbacks to 7.1. So, the delta there is 12.9 feet in terms of a variance that we would seek. Height will be conforming to today's zoning bylaws, and all other respects, it, you know, it will remain the same. So the footprint is slightly different, obviously, the building construction is different. So, realistically, we would be looking for the rear and side yard setback variances, but I typically have the board vote on the non-conformities that we can't change anyways, which is the square footage and the frontage. So, it's a, it's a four-pronged variance in that regard, and then a singular grant of a special permit, for the special permit. So, that's really all I have, the documents are pretty self-explanatory. If you have questions about the, the dwelling itself, existing, proposed, this guy right here is a lot smarter than I am with those types of questions, and he can answer any questions that you might have with regards to the dwelling. But I think the plans are pretty detailed, as I had gone through them prior to submission, so, but with that, I'll, I'll open it up to the board's questions and we'll take it from there.
Are there any butters present that would like to speak for or against the applicant? If you would, please come to the podium, name and address, please.
Any butters that wanna speak, now is your chance. On, on 66 Willowdale, come right up to the microphone.
Thank you, and thank you Attorney Nikosi. I don't know a lot about the technical aspects, but I do know that, that there are a lot of, like-
Can we have your name and address?
Oh, sure. It's Jennifer Campbell, it's 15 Indian Road.
So you're not in a butter?
I don't even know, I'm sorry, I don't know what that means.
That means your property is near this property?
Oh, no, it's not, no, it's like two houses over.
Okay, all right.
Oh, so-
I'm sorry.
So should I sit back down?
Yep, no, go right ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, please, please continue.
Continue.
Sorry.
Yep.
Okay. I know that the attorney has a lot of technicalities that aren't really being faced, because he wants like this, this, and this, and this person wasn't here to represent, and, yeah, I understand that, but I also understand that I don't know what is exactly, 'cause I got all the specs of what's going up, but he didn't have his other person to testify here, so I'm not exactly sure why he's able to speak on this behalf without that testimony. And the reason why I am here, I wanna understand about moving and raising, because I've lived in my house for 30 years, and I actually took some photos, my help, my daughter helped me, they're on the cellphone, and at this point, you know, it's all, I only have a quarter of an acre, and I love my house, but I can see the lake from my window, I can see it when I'm on the lawn. If something goes up higher, I'm not gonna see that anymore, I mean, I like to see, it's not a lot, but I like to see like the little sailboats going by, and I like to see like when they're windsurfing, and if I wanna walk down to the lake, of course I can, but I don't want that to be taken away, so I'm not sure if that is the case. And about the garage, I mean, I have photos too, well, you do as well, yeah, if it's gonna go up higher, then yeah, I'm gonna lose that. And I can, my cellphone, I can show you some photos of what my view is, and, I mean, I just don't wanna lose that. I mean, it's okay, people want, I, you know, my husband said to me, he said, you know what, it does make the neighborhood, you know, the value of property go up, and I agree 100%, but not at, like, I've been there for like 30 years, and I don't want that go, to go away, and I'm so sorry, I'm not really well-spoken, and I'm really nervous.
God, man.
Okay. If you want me to show you a photo on my cellphone, I can, but that's what I wanted to say.
Okay.
We might be able to mitigate those concerns a little.
Is it okay if I can see the picture?
Sure, of course.
I could try to explain to you if it would affect your-
Okay. Look, I, I went and I got all the photos too, but you know what, to me, I can read a flat plot plan when I have my property survey, and I've had it surveyed three years, you know, I mean, three times, I can read a flat one, but this one goes like, look how thick this thing is.
So I think the point that you're gonna hear Mr. Enright make is that, you know, right now, this house is sunken down, down to the water. The garage sits at a much higher elevation. So when this project is done, this, this house is done, it's really not gonna be much of anything above the current height of the garage, which is at the street level right now, which already limits view as it is. Jamie will be able to talk about that in a little bit greater detail, which I'll turn it over to him in a moment. So that's, that's an important point, that this house isn't, the garage and the house are not flush in terms of where their foundations are.
Looking at the photo of the house to the right-
White one?
That, that white one, that, that's a two-story, that's a, that's the gable end you're looking at, right? So you're looking at approximately that height?
Would you say you're that height or even higher than the-
No, we'll be right around that height.
'Cause you're adding about 15 feet, if I'm doing my math right, building height, from 18 to 33, so-
Um, it's only-
No? Is that about right?
Yes.
Yeah, somewhere around there, yes.
So we're less, we're less than what the zoning bylaw allows-
No, I understand that.
Right, yeah.
No.
The point that I'm, the point that I was trying to make-
It is a slope plot, yep.
If you have, if you have a street view-
Sorry.
And you're looking at the height of that-
Yep.
Where the height of this is right now, we're not, we're not going above where that garage, I guess.
But further on back, that's sort of, you're probably gonna be at the same peak of the white house.
That probably is the little peak to the house.
So right, so right now, you can't see over the roof of the little gray house and see the lake now.
Correct.
But you still, we will have that view to the left, just to the left of the house.
Correct.
That's, that's what I'm guessing, right?
Yes.
So I don't want it to appear that we're building some skyscraper here.
Right.
You know, that's not the case, and it's to everybody's benefit, the fact that we are sunken down by, by the lakeside.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be, it'll be a two-story, looking from the street, it'll look like a regular two-story like the white house next to it.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, just so that everybody-
Okay, I have another question.
Sure.
When it goes up, is there a guarantee it's not going to come up above where that, that garage is? Because it almost sounds like there's like a variance or something going on, and I'm sorry, I'm not a lawyer, but if it goes above, who's to stop it? Like, how do, how do we know that, like, I thought I saw something in here that says that they could like put that one up higher, and if they don't, that's fine, but who's to, like, gonna really measure it across?
Well, the bylaw prevents us from going any higher than 37 feet.
36 is the max, even with this board. And you're below that by three feet, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
That's at the tallest part of the building, which is on the lakeside, so-
At the apex.
Yes.
Well, who's gonna watch to make sure that happens, 'cause once it's up-
That's the building inspector, that's a building inspector's job.
You can't, you can't, once it's up, you're not gonna take it on down.
That's the building inspector's job, and we've had situations like that before.
Not gonna sign off on an occupancy permit if we're not complying.
Yep, you don't get a certificate of occupancy until it's done, as we see right here.
Okay.
He probably wouldn't even give us a building permit without-
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, this is gonna be the last of my comments, and I'm not trying to make trouble, I just wanna understand.
Sure.
So you're saying that the peak, the point of the garage is, nothing is going higher than that?
That's a slope lot, right?
Right.
So if you look at the height of that garage, where it sits on the, the plot of land-
Mm-hmm.
The ground slopes down to the lake.
Sure, and I understand that.
So if you look at the white house, the white house is a, a two-story gable end-
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm saying it's probably gonna be the same height of that white end of that gable end.
And no higher than the garage going straight out.
Yeah, of course not, no, it actually, actually probably is-
Garage is even higher.
It's gonna be, yeah, so garage is even higher, 'cause it's, it's up on the hill.
Sure.
Yeah. Now, from the back, you, you have such a slope that it's gonna appear to be a three-story, because it's gotta walk out basement, which a lot of these houses have.
All right, so what's, all right, so after he does the, the second story, what's going to stop him for, 'cause now he's got all these, these variances, what's gonna stop him from going up?
There's only variances right now-
What he has is what you're gonna see tonight, there's nothing-
For the, for the square footage, okay?
Okay.
There, there's a max height limit that are detailed on the plans, and the plans indicate a two-story with a, with a, with a pitched roof, right?
Okay.
So you're gonna, you're gonna appear to be a two-story house where that appears to be a, a one-story right now.
Okay, I think I'll just-
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Take a quick peek at my photos, and then if I have any more evidence to-
I, I don't, I, that view to the left of the gray house, I think you're still gonna have the water view, same thing, pretty, pretty close, right?
I'll pull up the picture, 'cause I don't wanna be difficult, I just wanna understand.
Oh, no, we-
I'm so sorry, I'm not well-spoken.
We wanna hear from, you know, local residents around it, that may have an issue.
That's right.
Yes, so don't feel that-
Well, thank you for listening.
Yeah.
Further?
Is there anybody else?
Anybody else that'd like to speak?
Hi, my name's Donna Pilot, I live at 65 Willowdale Ave. Well, I don't live there, but I own the house. My concern basically is the side yard. We have a right-of-way there for a beach, we've taken it all the way to the Supreme Court and won to keep it open.
Now, you said side yard, so you mean this, where I can see through to the water right now?
Yep, the left.
Did you pull up the, the drawing?
Yep.
Is Beach Street?
Not on this, is it?
Is it the Paper Street? It's the Paper Street.
Oh, Beach.
The Paper Road.
Beach Tree.
Yes.
Beach Trees.
Beach Tree.
Gotcha, yep, thank you.
We're not infringing on the Paper Road.
Yep.
Huh?
We're not infringing on the Paper Road.
Okay.
But go ahead.
Now, what's the width of that house gonna be, and how much, if you can put the other picture back, how much is that gonna be moved over now? Like, you can see the wall there, and then we have a wide opening right there?
There's a difference right here, there's the existing, here it's a new.
How, how much?
Well, it's not a whole one.
It's like a foot.
So right now, we're-
How much is the goal left?
Right now, we're like three feet off the Paper Road.
Okay.
That's why we're pulling it six feet back-
Okay.
To get further from the Paper Road and further from the lake.
Okay.
So, we're not encroaching into that Paper Road at all.
You're not.
So this is the Paper Road right here, Donna.
Yeah, I got mine too.
Okay? That's the Paper Road. This is where the existing house foundation is now-
Yep.
And that's where the new foundation is going to be.
Okay.
So we're pulling it back this way to give us more room from the Paper Road and further off the lake.
Okay, so this is like, how many feet is this difference from where it is now?
Two feet, so see where the walk, you know where the walkway is now?
Yep.
On the house?
Yep.
It'll be halfway into that walkway.
Okay, so it won't go past that wall that's-
No.
Going around the corner there?
No.
It won't even go to the end of that, right?
No.
Okay.
No, you're talking about this wall?
The one that had 13 feet. Was that, was you pulled that up, the drawing? What is that, 13 feet?
That shows where the existing house is now off the Paper Road. The black line is the existing house.
Is it the house of the, the lot?
No, no.
The black line is the house.
House.
So I'll show you.
So much to absorb.
So, this here is the Paper Road?
Right.
This here is the house, and it should be that one over here?
Yep.
Okay, so right now, it's 13 feet at that point of the Paper Road, but it's only like a foot at this point on the Paper Road. So we're pulling the house back to this red line, which brings us back further and gives us more room off the Paper Road.
So what is gonna be on, say, if you're looking at the house, what is gonna be on the left side of the house, you know, compared to the Paper Road? Is it gonna be a foundation or a fence?
It'll be the foundation that steps down, 'cause it's gonna be a finished basement.
Okay.
So look, there won't be a fence there, there'll just be the house, siding, windows, along this wall right here.
So what is the foundation size of the new house?
With the questions, you probably should be up here, 'cause folk, come on up, you have questions, right? You keep, come on up.
We are, we're all together.
Well, and I know, but, see, no one else can hear that, 'cause you had your microphone.
Introduce yourself, then, name and address, yep.
Thank you.
I'm Eileen Chinetti, and I'm on a butter.
What's your address, please?
At 63 Willowdale Ave.
Thank you.
We're right across the street.
Yep.
But my, our concern is, we seem to be losing our right-of-way every time somebody gets this house, they get smaller and smaller, so that's our main concern. We really don't care about the house, we welcome the new neighbors, all that stuff, we just wanna preserve our right-of-way to the beach.
We're, we're pulling off where it exists, where it exists today, we're moving away from that.
No, we're moving towards it.
No, we're moving away from it here.
Oh, in the front you are, but on the side you're not.
Right, but we're not coming, we're not coming into your access, so this is the Paper Road access.
Yep.
We're not coming into that at all. We're still gonna be-
And, and the structure, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like it's a little bit canted. It's not parallel to the, the right property line, so that's why it's a little bit closer to the back, and to the front, it's at 14.48, so it's a little bit canted.
Right.
And this, this issue, we flagged immediately as we were constructing the plans, we knew that this would be-
You knew about the right-of-way issue.
We knew this would be of concern to the butters, so we were very hypersensitive to not infringe upon that area, because we knew that somebody would be standing up here today, raising that very concern.
And the owner's aware that we've taken this to the Supreme Court and cannot kick us out of going down to that lake.
The owner is well-aware of that, yes.
What, what are some of the specific concerns? I'm interested, it was a previous owner's placing objects on that right-of-way or impeding?
He tried to prevent us.
So like, put a fence up?
Like a fence up or-
He was doing everything in his power to keep us from going down there. So we took it to court, and we went all the way up and we won.
Okay, so that access has been adjudicated, we knew that, before we even developed-
This is new to us, so that's, that's great information.
Well, you know what, this, this, I've lived in that family, we have a property here since the 1800s, so there's no way in heck that-
She's got 1911 map.
Yes, there's no way in heck we'll ever let that be closed.
Sure, well, thank you.
My question is again, what is the foundation size?
Yep.
Of the new house?
What do you mean, the height of the foundation?
Of the size.
The width.
2458, was it?
24 by 57, right now it's 20 by 57.
So you're gonna go four, are you gonna go two and two?
Two and two, right, so two feet this way and two feet this way.
Okay.
It might not even be that, 'cause we're gonna try to, like you said, skew it.
Already canted a little.
I, I have tech, just a minor technical, on these very close lots, are those dimensions from the pitch of the roof, or is that from the foundation to foundation side? So, so the pitch of the roof will come out another foot and a half on either side, right?
Foundation to foundation, which, this is-
So the vertical.
Yeah, right.
Yep, okay. Just so, you, you're aware, it's gonna be a little bit more, the, the pitch of the roof, the overhang's gonna be hanging a little bit over that dimension.
The measurements off the vertical of the structure.
Right, right.
Not off the pitch of the roof, that might come out more than the vertical.
Just wanna be aware of that.
I'm just concerned that that extra two feet is now gonna go into the right-of-way.
No, it's not.
Oh, you're still-
This is the edge of the right-of-way that comes this way.
You still have about 14.48 at the top, and then at the bottom, closer to the lake, it's 13 roughly, I would say 13.
The house is still 13.
So you're gonna move the whole thing 58?[1688.13] So, you're gonna move the whole thing fifty-eight?
From the beginning of the right-of-way.
Yeah, from the edge of the Paper Road into where the foundation is at the top, it's fourteen point four eight, if I'm reading this correctly to the red. And then roughly thirteen at the bottom.
Correct.
Correct.
My last concern was height also, because when I am standing in the front of my house, I have a gorgeous view of the lake. If they take that away, that's gonna lower the value of my home, and I don't want that to happen. If it's only as high as the garage, Jamie, I got no problem with that.
It won't obstruct any more than the garage does right now, with the garage's existence.
Okay.
Yeah, but the garage, the, I mean, the roof is like this.
Yeah.
So, you can see right over, it's almost, it's almost street level, so it depends on the type of roof that is gonna be on this one. Is it gonna be a gable? So, it's gonna be much wider.
It won't be much higher than what the garage roof is now, so, I know you guys live across the street, so, you know, trying to look through the peak of that garage, you're not really feeling anything.
Oh, we got a great view, we have an amazing view.
Right, that's almost, like I said, it's almost street level, because it drops down.
You're up higher anyways.
Right.
So, it's not gonna obstruct.
Well, I'm up higher, but she's not, she's down low, yeah.
But you're up to the left, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not gonna obstruct you.
So, we've tried to, you know, as we develop these plans, we tried to be mindful of these issues and not, we could've gone higher. And we actually have come below what the bylaw allows us to do, trying to mitigate those types of impacts on this. I mean, the reality is that everybody has rights to develop their own lots.
Of course.
And try to make highest the best use of their own lots, and the waterfront lots are gonna do what waterfront lots do, they're gonna have the best view. However, we actively talked about this, because we know, all of you, you know, uh, we know the neighbors, we know the families. Mr. Tran, trying to be hypersensitive to want to come to this neighborhood and be a good neighbor. So, we tried to make it a good project, but tried to mitigate the concerns which we knew would be raised. So, maybe it's not perfect for you, but it is...
As long as the right-of-way is not touched.
He's tried to be a lot more cooperative than others could've come in here and just said, "We're going max bylaws and that's the end of it." He didn't want to do that, he, he's really trying to mitigate, mitigate the issues, so.
Well, we really would've had a problem then.
No, I know.
Well, of course, the big concern was the right-of-way.
Yes.
That's what you really came here for, and I think you're feeling comfortable that that's not being encroached upon.
Not to be, right, exactly.
Not being touched.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further abutters?
John Pugh, sixty-four Willowdale Avenue. I'm curious about a timetable that you have gentlemen proposed for construction, because of their right-of-way, because of it's summertime on the lake, and I am immediately next door across the, that Paper Street. And I have a girlfriend who works from home, and she doesn't want to have to close the windows to do her work. So, I'm just curious of where your spoils are gonna go, your protection of the lake, I mean, this is a swimming lake. It's very active recreationally, uh, we all partake, the neighbors come down that pathway, that's their access to the lake, as expressed numerous times. And is this tomorrow, is this in the fall, after the swimming summer season is over? Or are we gonna have construction all summer long?
So, I'll, I'll make a preliminary comment, and I'll have Jamie speak to it, because he's the one that's actually swinging the hammers out there. As I mentioned at the front end of my presentation, this is not our only permitting stop, we have to go in front of the Conservation Commission. So, assuming we get approval tonight, our plan is to be in front of the Conservation Commission, probably the first meeting in June at the latest. They are the purveyors of the impacts on the water body, so they have very strict regulations about during construction activities, erosion controls, sediment controls, impacts to the lake, impacts to, you know, the neighbors relating to water and things of that nature. So, they're gonna mandate an order of conditions that puts down a rulebook as to exactly how we have to conduct ourselves to protect everybody and try to mitigate the construction impact as best we can. So, there is another forum where those issues are going to be addressed and resolved, and you're certainly, you're gonna get a butter notification again for that process too. So, you can certainly show up to that meeting and voice your concerns as well, and I'm, and the Conservation Commission will take those, those comments to heart, because those are key issues. So, from our perspective, we're gonna comply with what DEP and the Tinsborough Wetland Protection Act bylaws require, the DEP regulations. We're gonna try to mitigate impacts for ongoing construction for the neighborhood. I mean, look, it's not gonna be silent, I mean, we're putting up a new house, there's gonna be some banging of some...
Oh, I agree, I agree, sir.
You know, there's gonna be some noise, so you guys are gonna have to have some tolerance, just like we, we have to be respectful of the neighbors. So, we're gonna try to do that as best we can, I'm sure Jamie will do that as best we can. Once we have approval, so, understand the path here, um, you know, there's a, there's a, an appeal period, twenty-day appeal period for an approval here. And then, uh, we have to go in front of the Conservation Commission, so let's assume that we have a building permit in our hands by the end of June. So, if you were to start later in June, Jamie, what does construction completion look like start to finish?
Start to finish is probably about four months. So, I, I don't think we would have a building permit till July, I would say.
I mean, obviously, the first things first is gonna be demo, and then it's going to be site work, and then it's going to be get a foundation in, get it framed, get it weather tight. And then probably the last two months are going to be all of the interior workup, um, finished with finished landscaping after that. So, I think the louder parts of the construction will probably be on the front end.
Correct.
You know, with the equipment and the things of that nature, but it's not, you know, they want to get it done as soon as possible, so, you know.
Oh, I understand that, and I understand the, the construction process, I'm an environmental engineer for the city of Lowell.
Yeah.
And we're about to tear up Centerville with the drainage work, so I, I understand all that part. And thank you for that recommendation of coming back for the Conservation Commission to express my concerns of the spoils, of the protection to the lake. And is it gonna hinge, infringe, excuse me, on the neighbors' access to the lake? I mean, I just walked out my back door.
No, no, it's not, we're not gonna impede the neighbors' access to the lake during construction.
Right.
Correct. And also, I've done like fifteen projects on this lake over the last ten years, so respectfully, I know how the neighbors feel and what they're looking for. So, I've done a lot of projects on Lake Masscapic itself.
You did Durkens? You did that one?
I did Durkens' house. I did Denome's house.
Yep.
So, I've done a lot.
Triacus?
I did, I did Triacus, um, Zach's house, yes, I built that.
He's on my other side.
Yeah, so I built Zach's house, so I've done a lot of projects on Masscapic.
And we also...
And you do good work.
Thank you.
And we appreciate it.
We obviously know the families that are, the abutters here, so...
Correct.
I mean, you've got, you've got a caring property owner and a caring builder, both knowledgeable.
And thank you for articulating that.
Better than stranger stranger that has no regard to what the surrounding environment is, that's not the case here. You couldn't cherry pick a better combination of homeowner and builder.
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other abutters, for or against?
Seeing none, can I get a...
I have one question, if you're so sorry.
Come on. Trying to keep it moving.
At the beginning of the meeting, Attorney Nikozia said that, um, there was somebody here who wasn't be able to be here to produce evidence.
The engineer, correct.
Right, um, I think we should get an adjournment until that person is here to give that real document. And I don't want to look into this blindly, and, um, I don't hate anybody, but I think evidence is key and not just hearsay. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
I... So, the numbers are on the, on the plans.
Absolutely.
Existing, proposed.
Yeah, I, I respectfully disagree that there's a need for the engineer to provide testimony here, the plan is unambiguous. This was the design engineer for the house plans? This is just the civil engineer for the plot plan. Okay. Oh, oh, the civil, okay. Yeah.
We don't always have that person anywhere.
I never, I normally don't have that person here, unless there are some unique site complexities that are addition, and that's not the case.
The builder knows they're gonna be held, builder knows you're being held to these numbers, and that's how, that's how it works.
So, so you, you do have an up-to-date certified plot plan?
Yep.
Yes.
Correct.
Just a side issue, uh, is it properly staked out, is it pinned?
It hasn't been pinned yet.
It hasn't been pinned, so...
Because we did this during the winter, um, he went out there to stake it out, and, you know, just couldn't do it with all the snow.
Okay.
So, he hasn't been out there since the snow out.
What may allay some of the fears is if it's permanently pinned.
Oh, it will be pinned with a certified plot plan for the foundation.
And if you could delineate the right property line and the left property line, especially along Beach Street, and you don't encroach upon, across that line.
Correct.
We're gonna have to provide an as-built as well.
Yeah, yeah, correct, but we will stake it out, prior, prior to demo, we will stake it out.
Yeah, that's the way to do it, thank you.
And if you want to make that a condition of the approval, we're fine with that. The pinning and the staking, and the delineation of the... Yes. Property lines? Yeah, we can do that, yeah. Can I get a... Would that help allay some of the fears, at least on the setbacks and Beach Street, right? Okay. Any motion to close the public portion?
So, moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, board discussion?
Okay, so, we were talking about order of conditions, maybe having it pinned, and during construction having it marked for both the right property line and the Beach Street, Beach Tree Street property line.
Read the comments?
Um, can we do some reading? We have requests for comment. Sewer Department, this property is connected to sewer, they'll need to contact the sewer department to schedule a cut and cap of their sewer line prior to demo. From Conservation, a notice of intent and a minor storm order management permit will need to be filed with the Conservation Commission prior to the issuance of a building permit. Assessors, no adverse comments. Tax Office has no concerns, Building Department has no concerns. Fire Department, no concerns at this time. Board of Health, no issues at this time. That's all we've got for, request for comments from the other boards in town at this time?
Okay, um, some of my concerns were encroaching on the lake, I see that you're actually moving off the lake, so that, that is a betterment.
Right.
Uh, you're going from a twenty point two width to a twenty-four, it's, it looks like on the plan that it's almost evenly spaced. Just make note that the roof overhangs will be a little bit less than that to the property line. If we could take upon approval, if this is approved, we'd like to add the contingencies that the property is properly pinned, uh, per the survey. And during construction, that we have markers or some sort of other stakes or even tape placed on that line so that building materials run off, any other building constraints don't encroach on either the right side or the left side of the property during construction. And, and it does seem a little tight to get, uh, equipment in there, especially if you were putting up trusses with a crane, but, uh, everything should, uh, stay on the property during construction, and you're well aware of that.
Understood.
I have nothing further to add.
I, I did have a, a concern about the height, um, but it is well within specification. The house next door is approximately gonna be about the same height. Looking at some of the photos, uh, you'll still probably have, I say probably, but you'll still have that left-hand side of the house view of the lake, which you sho, showed and, and the, the neighbor showed. Uh, as far as looking over the garage, the garage is at a higher elevation, even though that's a one-story roof, this will be a, at the front door, it'll be a two-story gable. And on the lakeside, it'll be, it'll appear to be three stories, but that just shows you the slope of the property. But the adjoining properties are built in a similar type of fashion. So, I don't see any kind of degradation to, to the neighborhood. I do see a, a little bit of a loss to each property line though, because of the wider house, right? But it is brought back from the lake. Those are my concerns.
Your honor?
Uh, no, the public portion is over now.
I just think this is in alignment with the rest of Willowdale Avenue and all the improvements that are happening, happening along that roadway and continued improvement around the lake since I've been on this board, so I'm in favor.
I think Attorney Nikozia did an excellent job addressing the abutters' concerns, um, that were raised and, um, I think having some sort of delineation of the lot line during construction will be helpful, um, to address those concerns.
All right, um, like to make a motion?
I, I have no, I have nothing.
Do you have your calculator?
It's written out for us.
I do have some of the numbers.
You do have...
Yeah, I wrote the numbers down, too.
Michael twelve.
I'll make the motion.
Who wants it?
So, again, I would ask for separate motions on the special permit of the variance. So, variances, um, so we're looking for a variance on the square footage, non-conforming, um... Frontage, rear setback.
Rear setback, side setback, and everything else is compliant.
Yes.
Twelve five oh five, twenty-four, twelve point nine, and twelve point nine.
Uh, five nine five.
Five nine five, yeah, I forgot to put the line. Okay, where's the front paper? Um, let's do a motion for a special permit first, uh, so there's this, a motion for a special permit under section six point one, six point two, and six point three of the zoning bylaw for renovation of a pre-existing non-conforming residential dwelling, existing structure to be razed and redeveloped for the plans submitted herewith for sixty-six Willowdale Avenue, Tinsborough, Massachusetts.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That does pass, now...
All right, like to make a motion for a variance for sixty-six Willowdale Avenue, Tinsborough, Massachusetts for, for the requirements of section five point five of the zoning bylaw for the lot square footage, side yard, and rear yard setbacks, and for such other relief as may be requested and necessary. In particular, the lot size is a required R-two zone, requires twenty thousand square feet, the existing is seven thousand four hundred and five square feet, so the variance is for twelve thousand five hundred and ninety-five square feet. The frontage required is seventy-five feet, existing is fifty-one feet, the proposed is fifty-one feet, so there is no change, so it's a variance of twenty-four feet. Rear setback is required to twenty feet, the existing is three feet off the property line, the proposed is seven point one, so this is a variance of twelve point nine feet. Side setback required is twenty feet, currently existing is three feet, proposed is seven point one feet, so variance of twelve point nine feet.
Contingencies? Contingencies?
Oh, the contingency is prior to the commencement of construction, property will be fully staked, um, including clear markers along Beach Tree Street.
We request pinned, probably pinned.
Pinned, um, staked and pinned, um, and a clear demarcation of the line along Beach Street, however you choose to, to demarcate.
Yeah, I'll probably put a construction fence up along the...
On the right side.
And on the right.
Uh, right and left side of the property.
Thank you. That was a motion?
That was a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Intermission? Intermission, no, just keep rolling.
Keep rolling.
I know you all want to go home. You stay and represent me if you want, pro bono.
I have a quick question.
Yeah, we have another hearing.
Next meeting.
All right, if you want to wait till the end. Okay, all righty, sorry, Sean, I was just, I was just giving up one minute. Thank you. Folks, any talking out in the hallway, please? Thank you.
Hearing number two, one twenty-five Norris Road, map twenty-four, Parson, Parcel eleven F, Lot Zero. Julian Scola and Jennifer Perkins-Porter, applicants for a variance under section five point five. Right-side yard setback and any other permit relief as may be required under the Tinsborough zoning bylaws to construct a thirty-six by twenty-eight three-car garage with an adjoining mudroom advertised in the Lowell Sun April twenty-fourth and May first, twenty twenty-five. Can I get a motion to waive the reading on the abutters' list?
So, moved. Second.
Uh, all po, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Are there any challenges to the legal notice or abutter notifications?
It's amazingly quiet.
Seeing none, um, all right, we'll turn the floor over to you.
All right, thank you very much, um, so we are requesting this dimensional variance, um, because of the shape of our lot. You can kind of see that it's long and somewhat narrow, um, so in order to fit the garage structure on there, um, there's a need to, to, to get that, um, setback variance, um, the, uh, you know, there is really no other place on the lot to put a garage. The, putting it on the other side of the house would encroach on the, um, on the street-side setback, um, so this really is the only place. It also places in a place that's sort of tucked away in some trees and not really, you know, won't be a, a huge visual, um, distraction, so... Yeah, our house is one of two houses on the entire road that doesn't have a garage, um, so it's in line with, you know, what, what the rest of the neighborhood sort of typically has. We're gonna build it tastefully, it's not adding any additional living space, um, just some attic space above the garage, so it's not gonna be super, super high. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to explain more, but I, I, I think like the application kind of speaks for itself. Um, I've talked to... Um, I've talked to all of my neighbors on the sort of immediate abutting. They all support it, have no problem with it. I think a few of them may have sent emails.
Yeah, let's read them into the record.
Yeah.
Linda Priam, chair room at 124 Norris Road, which is across the street.
Mm-hmm.
I am the neighbor of Julian Scholl and Jennifer Perkins at 125 Norris. I support their application for a variance to build a garage and have no objections to the proposed location. John and Kathleen Pierce, are they on?
Um, what's the address?
I don't think they gave them one.
They didn't.
Um, I think they're.
Oh, 120.
I think there are a couple of houses up.
I'm a neighbor of Julian Scholl and Jennifer Perkins at 125 Norris. I support their application for a variance to build a garage and have no objections to the proposed location. I'm writing as a neighbor of Julian Scholl and Jennifer Perkins. This is from George McGuirewa at 120 Norris Road. Uh, to express my enthusiastic support for their application for a variance to build a garage on the property. Having had the opportunity to review their proposed plans and understand the intended location of the garage, I can confidently say I have no objections to the proposed structure or its placement. I believe the addition will not only enhance the functionality of the property, but also contribute positively overall aesthetic and value of the neighborhood. Julian and Jennifer have been thoughtful neighbors and responsible homeowners, and I trust in their project will be carried out with care and respect for the surrounding community. Thank you for considering this letter of support.
Wow, thank you, George. Yeah, um, so I, I guess the only other thing to add, I guess, to build off of George's point. Um, when this property was purchased, it was a foreclosure and in pretty tough shape. And over the past 14 years, my wife and I have worked real hard on two teacher salaries to, to make this property much nicer than it was when, when it was initially purchased. And we have been pinching our pennies and saving our dollars because I am a car guy and have like dreamed of having a garage where I can, you know, sort of work on cars with my sons and kind of like do that work. So, um, I'm sure my neighbors will appreciate me not doing brake jobs in the driveway anymore. So like, you know, and I'll be able to do it. And the weather's bad too, so, yeah.
Well, at this time, if there was any abutters present to speak or against the application, they can do so. But seeing none, uh, can I get a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oh, second.
Second. Uh, uh, in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, close the public portion, so a board discussion?
I do have a question. I drove by, of course, it was raining, because every weekend it rains. It's going to rain this weekend, but I would buy it, it was raining. Um, there's a water body that is on the same side as the garage is going to be, not a water body, um, some water that flows through, no?
No, there is on the, on the backside of our property. So like on the Buck Hill, if you go down Buck Hill.
No kidding.
Yeah, no, there's no.
So, okay, then I'll, I'll frame my question a little differently.
Sure.
I didn't see anything from Mr. Follan, who's the obvious Follan.
Yeah.
He's the obvious abutter. I don't see him here, but.
I mean, I can show you a text that says like, you know, we have no problem with it. Like, I think he's just not really much of an emailer.
You're not taking down any foliage of like trees and shrubbing them between?
No, I mean, we did take down a couple of trees out of, these were trees that were like leaning towards our house.
But you're not, as a part of this project, going to clear a path between you and the neighbor. It's going to maintain the same.
In fact, I think we're going to plant some more to like replace. He took down some trees a couple of years ago and sort of, we've both been like dealing with some really tall pine trees that are looking pretty precarious over, over our houses, so, um, yeah. And, and he was supportive of that and, you know, I, I've like had a good relationship with him and his wife for years.
How far would you say his house is off your?
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not.
Well, that's what I kind of saw, I think, when I drove by. There's a lot of space there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a good space there. Um, I'll be like honest, when I first was designing this project, I was sort of working under the misconception of a 20-foot setback, because I guess in part of our residential zones, that's what it was. And I, when I like Googled it quickly, that's what I came up with. So like that was sort of my working understanding. And then, you know, when I went to go sort of like put everything together for permitting and stuff, I saw the error of my ways. And, and by that point, I had already like set my heart on the sort of size of the structure. And so that's when I just like approached the neighbor and said like, hey, would you support, you know, this?
Yeah, I'm looking at this thicket that's kind of between you and the neighbor.
Yeah.
That probably is not going to be impacted in any.
No.
Yeah.
No, and.
His line of sight is not going to change.
But thank you.
I don't know if you saw when you drove by, but if you look down straight at my, straight down my driveway, you can see whoever built the house originally, like probably built it with the intention of putting a garage, because it's a, it's a circular driveway, and then there's a straightaway. And right at the end of the straightaway is exactly where the garage is going to go. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
So you're, you're just finishing the dream.
finishing some guy from 1986's dream, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I don't understand why these lots sometimes were created, these long, you know, instead of making them a little bit more proportional.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Yeah, just one more question. It's very important, uh, Ford, Chevy, or Mopar?
There it goes.
Is this going to, I mean, I have a Mustang, does that help anyway?
He's more of a Chevy guy.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if that will affect his decision.
Get a Camaro if it makes you happy.
Okay, all right.
So you are looking for a 10.29, a 10.29 relief on the right-hand side?
I, I think I put 11 feet just to like, kind of like.
You took the average, uh?
Cover.
I'm going, I'm going by the closest, 19.71.
Yeah.
That'd be 10.29, so that'd be the closest.
He's just thinking he's going, going to the 11, because you're so close.
Went to the 11 just, you know, to be safe.
Okay, that was my only other question. Like to make a motion?
Close the public portion?
Hm?
Did we close the public portion? We didn't, okay.
Yes, yes. We're in a discussion phase. Yeah, so I don't really, uh.
Pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with the Ford, Chevy, Mopar thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Read the department comments.
Oh, we, yeah.
Conservation Department has no concerns. Tax Office has no concerns. Fire Department has no concerns. Property is not connected to sewer, there are no concerns with the proposed project. Health Inspector, this property is on septic. The addition has to meet the setback from the system. Board of Health will require a plot plan that shows the location of the septic system and the distance of the proposed addition to the septic system.
You aware of that?
I'm aware of that. I've.
Okay.
I, uh, I got that comment and then spent a half a day looking through our files, which they have lost the original septic system plan. So I am in the process of having.
It relocated.
An engineer come, like a septic company come out and relocate everything and.
Market.
Like, I assume that's something I can submit with the building inspector when I.
Uh, probably, is it building inspector or Board of Health?
Or, or just like, yeah.
Yep, right, of course.
Yeah.
It's good to know where it is.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I know, I know where it is.
I know where it is.
I don't have a.
Is that on se, is that a, is there sewer line up Norris?
No, not that far yet, and probably not ever.
Probably not ever.
They went, they're like half a mile from us.
They got to the school.
Yeah, that's, I guess that was the important thing.
All right, so we need a motion for a variance from the side yard setback.
Yep.
Um, it is, all right, I will make a motion for a variance from the requirements of section 5.5, paragraph, Table 1, in an R1 district of the zoning bylaws for 125 Norris Road, Tinsborough, Massachusetts, for the side yard setback requirement. Required is 30 feet. Proposed, um, is 11 feet of variance relief, uh, which would make it approximately tw- uh, 20 to 21 feet off of the property line.
I think 19, 19.
Yeah, 19. I'm sorry, 19 to 21 approximately off the property line.
Can I ask?
Second that motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, we're, it's going to go right in it. Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Good luck.
There you go.
Great.
Ask anything you want.
So if I, if I do, if I, if I locate the septic and there is a need to like, you know, massage.
Alter this?
Alter that.
Got to come back.
I got to come back.
Very likely. Yeah, very likely.
Like if it's altered in a way that doesn't.
Further encroach?
If it doesn't further encroach, do I need to come back?
You have a variance for up to 11 feet, so.
Yes, there you go.
If it's less of an encroaching.
You can stay within that variance, there you go.
Yes, it's less of an encroaching.
I think there is a possibility I might need to like move it, move the structure back a few feet, but not at all to the side.